If you not say you be a Bambamikis, don't say oh yeah! Hello! Now, with Papa no come, the Prime Minister and Head of Government, special representative of the Head of Faith, President Boukouya. Now, in only time where we would just, we don't get any program, we would talk plenty, but he would just come up now, eh? And he will salute now briefly, then he go continue in Waka. Is that so? Allah will like here. Now as he come up, we will still continue the welcome, we clap and dance. If you not know to dance, please go over there. If you are too too high, move and walk over. Okay, la oh yeah! North west oh yeah! I'm sorry, say hello, I need for dance, say hello, they can focus on water to dance. I do extremely happy for this wonderful reception. Where you be, where we come from, Yaounde. Today, we get, and I want thank you a plenty, clap for ourselves, so thanks. I don't say, what if Papa, President Boukouya, he dey want to give you a hand now, and I don't say he dey clap for now, and he dey forgive you too now. Thank you very much for better for this wonderful welcome. We came here, sent by our Father, President Boukouya. He be sent me here, two years ago. We began consult, we began talk say, in November 9th, this is meeting, where he go do after the programs, when they came for North West and South West. Love is so hard, you know? Two years after, he don't say before. He can't tell you, for can tell, our population, for North West, say, the things we, they think he get for good. The things we, he be promise for good, it all accomplished. Please clap for that. The problems we, lawyers in the put up, the problems we, teachers in the put up, the problems we, politicians in the put up. All those programs, they don't dissect one after another, and they don't find a solution. They need to see those, somebody, somebody, everybody, he don't say the day, that he think he send me here, for can't explain, say those programs, they don't bring the sun. They don't sometimes, we not get need for self pushing gain the fight. We not get need, for so the private will begin their, we care for our life for the good. We not get need, so we very, we need to call our sisters, when they, they come here for protecting. We don't get need, for make life, absolutely difficult for ourselves. Love is so? Now we all want peace? Thank you. And since we want peace, I can't hear for nothing, we all, we have for work for that peace, and have for work for that peace. Now for the ex-slee, for the people, when they see they, we comes for push, when they make life difficult for us, and difficult for themselves, say, time don't reach, we, we care for cleaning the slaves, clean, who make them clean, if we come back together as one people. Then we enjoy with ferment and worries, no one for enjoying in those days, where I see when they can join today, I thank you a plenty for this wonderful show of solidarity, thank you very much. The delegation for people, friends, brothers, sisters, all of them, they get only one thing on their minds, say, me, Bambamikis, they is North West, they return as the people. Me will see, say, all these programs, whether they be, one by one, all we have done is all that. And if any other program still be, they will resolve them in a context of peace, it would be so they, we don't be resolved any further. Love is so? And thank you a plenty, and I go on here, this now soon, I go knock on, see I'm fine, yeah, I'm fine, we show hands, see what I'm saying. Okay, you put a few hands to me, you do that.
You saw it, and we so happy for the people who came out, and for the wonderful word of welcome and the song they offered. And we thanking God that we welcome him in the name of our Lord and our Master, Captain and Perfector of our faith Jesus Christ, and his welcome. And we declare for him, and he stay here, that there will be peace. And after his visit, we pray that peace will remain. And I thank all those who helped in mobilizing the population, I am grateful to everybody.
Oh yeah! Bambamikis, oh yeah! It is my honour and secret privilege to welcome all of you to Bambamikis, on behalf of the entire Bambamikis city council area. And in the name of the full of Bambamikis, as we converse share today, to commit with the Prime Minister and Head of Government in his excellency, Chief Dr. Dr. Gyalmoute, who is all and essential to the North West. To say had a visit of the Prime Minister and Head of Government, to the North West, to the East, to the North, is to say very little. You see us during this very trying moment, with an ongoing war against separate his fighters, who continues to make life so unbearable for our local communities and people, who never been tired yet. In fact, the crew of the entire North West region, in their, uh, Bambamikis, are coming out for close to a month lockdown for shutdown of economic activities. And we get today, this is one more unnecessary lockdown, too many. Yet your Excellency, the Prime Minister, Head of Government, you are busy to offer they give us the opportunity to accomplish the great achievements of the Grand National Dialogue, which will carry Yaounde from September 8th to October 2019, two full years down the line. Bambamikis, oh yeah! Bambamikis, oh yeah! Bambamikis people, we are here, we are not the same Bambamikis, I am here. Bambamikis people, we are not the same Bambamikis, I am here. Yes, sir! Bambamikis people, we are not the same, we are not the same Bambamikis, I am here. Yes, sir! I am not the same Bambamikis. I got some now, it's all my life, I want to be my heart, I want, I want to be my heart, I want to be my heart. We are not the same! Any one of the major achievements from this Grand National Dialogue is evident. In my humble voice, I do declare for, standing here today to welcome you, in my capacity as an elected candidate, I am not an operative, government deputy. Glory over the elected representative, can you, you may applaud it, applaud it, oh! Hello! Hello! Ah, afternoon, you're very good. Afternoon, you're very good. That's you, afternoon, thank you. Now, this, now resolve, one of the testimonies of the Grand National Dialogue, when we Papa here today, you may take that from his excellency, President and our Papa Boukouya of Yaounde, the holder of this, and then, and give me the power for that dialogue, to talk for his country's victory. I think I tell the other people, something, but I dare Bambamikis, they have been this one year, for this time for him, they don't say, what should be the problem? They don't know what I said, what should I come, what should we do together? And the one reason, they ask for what we do, we believe. And I want tell you, honestly speaking, for push, say, President Boukouya, the only American, may he use your American, he say we are calm, but we reason together, and hey, they call on the Grand National Dialogue, that we are not political, we are a slave. Thank you. But this is a great talk about, come on, we talk, no matter how painful the struggle be, no matter how violent be, no matter how well we did, call me a song. And I want to apologize, it's my two years, when the people all around, they be strong, they be listen, and they be talk. From today, the Prime Minister, I will make an assessment, try to work out how we work out. For this focus, on behalf of the entire Bambamikis city council area, and its inhabitants, will return gratitude to the Head of Faith. Will you be star, practice that, and that will be no bad. At the beginning of this year, 2021, and as just a few weeks ago, we all witness the whole taking and installation of our premier regional executive council of North West Regional Assembly. Hence, I have heard help from the South, that goes with the other person, regional officers, why not? Here, here, I like here, you hear the regional president, we are still the regional president, we still the regional leader, eh, you mind, here, come on, we are celebrating you. And of course, we get an independent consigliere. Independent consigliere, maui don't be long for expert, maui don't be long for CPM, maui don't be long for anybody, where it's drop on their lap, or they will write, if you put them together, it's secondly para, and that will be the call of the consigliere, it is friendly, and they say you have right, you do not, and we thank you. This, now, to fall out of the many groups of the Grand National Dialogue. And I need some that, with a special status, today we have the regional house, the regional assembly, which has two houses, the House of Kids, and the House of Regional Representatives. What other way, who we have, who bring the regional and local governors, who lot set to the grassroots, that this, it is our family home, where it's, that sooner than later, all implementation acts, who have been finalized, for the effective execution, of our system, made, both of the main manifest. To say this, the sustainable development of our region is a part of the effective and pragmatic evolution, evolution of functions and resources to the regional and local communities. It is for this reason that we welcome, and committed, for a special reconson program, launched in April 2020, to be executed through the United Nations Development Program, UNGDP. We hope that through this past program, all the sons and daughters of the North West region who have been displaced by the ongoing war of secession, and who are protesting in all the cities of number one, shall be able to resettle in their homes, as well as many refugees who are found abroad in Ivory Nigeria. For the Prime Minister and Head of Government, you must have known this as clearly to this town, that the population, as far out in the numbers, you turn to your right, you see them, you turn to your left, you see them, this is a push of their passion, of the people of Bambamikis to the republican institutions. We regret that some may on, a couple of may on, people of evil mindedness, who think life to be miserable to everyone you want to be. And I think, they may die of strain, to scare the food of America's poverty. But nevertheless, darkness will never prevent our light. We are right, Bambamikis, we are right! Are we right? We are right, we will shine! And we are determined to make Bambamikis, thank you, back up, David. As we get to the end of our Bambamikis land! Yeah, thank you. Your Excellency, I would like to thank all of you, travel the same, and I would like to call you to note, that you travel through some very rocky roads, and since that, Bambamikis, or, thank you, Bambamikis. This is a nightmare we have experienced in Bambamikis, for close to a decade. Even as you brought it to Bambamikis, your Excellency, I will tell you this one story here. A lady came to me, in Maldives, at the city castle, she wanted to see, she was sitting on my car, and I asked her what is the matter of my car? She said, yes, I need car, I need motor, I need motor. I told her, what is wrong with my motor? She said, I need motor, maybe I'm blind. Ah, I said, how come motor will you fly? She said, I have this motor, or scooter, or scooter, they say most now we need to fly. I said, no, I have no scooter, I have no motor to fly. I told her, thank you, how do you do it now? He say, you lot are the rules of training, towards, uh, the design, some people, those, like, on, on motor, they eye, they, and they fly. Ah, I said, for motor, maybe you fly, I said, I tell you, what should we do, for the scooter you see now, he say, you are wrong, you are sick now. Your Excellency, I was shocked and understanding of a, of a mirror, and asked a woman complaining about the state of our roads, it is very, very horrible, very, very bad. We don't really need to tell you much about it, because you are here. But I think, I am sure, that despite the fact that you got a good car, you should tell the bones of the roads, very bad, very, very bad. And we really have said in the program that this road will be repaired. But one small repair, one two days before you, your Excellency, that, this road has suffered in the hands of so many to talk, Bambamikis, you are right? This road does suffer, it does suffer true true, today we see, we all see your side, so today, you all, and we, all for what, but today, we don't want to defeat you, because today, we thank God, you don't have me want, you come all along the way from Yaounde, we, our Bambamikis, our Bambamikis. Right here, I see this a whole year, ah, 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 we see, we see, we see, uh, Excellency, by, I got my dad, I got my son, he say. You see, all these are like, so we don't think, and we don't want to, and we have, and we have to. If we don't know anything to do, we go to the polls, or you, your Excellency, say, this vote, bottom next, they reply to, as you go down for Yaounde, you go down, bottom three section. Move this word, all of bottom next, put this vote straight, so vote right, 2022, 2023. Bambamikis, you are not wrong? I tell you, Excellency, when this road be sad, when this road will be sad, with the influence of darkness on this town, there was peace, it is, it will be cold and burning off, all of the solid. The road go the whole way in one road, where true true, he don't say, but it will affect. And now, every body here, every person, every products, I tell you about the guy in Maldives, don't go behind that, and after this rain, he will make dust, and throw it to them. It's a very vaccine, so we whole way, and I will go take the route, and say, leave this parabola, walk back, put this parabola down for a pocket time, and then, building a road, like, you not be in January, you don't manage this parabola quietly, and by December, I can assure you, say, Bambamikis will be a wonderful, wonderful place, and will return for our numbers, this road. We get, let's break this thing that we worry about, we then call it to sad. Number two, I say, this year, we go to vote, two things for any one digital, and this particular year, that see where they call a parabola, they go play finals of a local, and this thing, they go play finals of a local, they remember, they practice of those sports, so, we get, we don't know exactly what is the problem, my Excellency, but the problem is the plant. We stay here, together, and we don't talk other, for all these years, if, if there anyhow, if there anyhow, we love sports of Bambamikis, we therefore we appeal to you, and we are meant to appeal before we trust you, and we trust President Boukouya. Say, when you reach Yaounde, walk, go start, this is the stage, okay, we so? Now, we don't want to complain, I want to read book, because road be go on, but it is slow, but however, this road will be called to Bambamikis, and Bambamikis is you, but we honor road, that parabola do, Bambamikis. Your Excellency, that is the sole opening and entrance of Bambamikis to the square world. We pray you, say, if you know something crazy, parabola do, Bambamikis will become unpassable, would it fall over near, unpassable. Therefore, we beg, we plead, if this works, that other place, this place, and documents, and whatever, whatever, for Yaounde, we beg say, now, this your new program, where you are saying today, the centralizer, send a cabo, we go fix cabo, we fix this, even now, in one hand, send it! If this ever win, this ever win, Rato! We will make progress very, my Excellency, that in the context of your working with this here, that, these building strategies, can remain and center our conversation. Of course, this is Bambamikis, for indeed, it's security across the hinterlands and the region, and to all towns and and to all towns and citywide areas, this is a very high peak. There is danger for our people to be reconciled themselves. And here, I would like to draw a mythical metaphor, from the book of Genesis, the story of Cain and Abel, two brothers who made sacrifices for God, each of his own cruelest, but God favored Abel, and his brother Cain, out under Moloch Abel. Whereupon God punished him by monelling to a life of wondering, a life of fatabot. So to this effect, I am calling to all Bameda people, all Ababa people, who are here, any man where he kill a brother, he kill a sister, you are condemned by God to a life of the fatabot. Like we know that place of Cain, every by generation after you, the road, they face of Cain. Now take it back, in your feed and life, go back to the spiritual. Then we stop this issue of killing. You fear Sodja, you fear police, you fear this one, you fear this one, ah, ah. That person you kill, not a certain brother, you, then we stop. Bameda, we are here, proceed, no one, you don't go with him, brother, they reward, and fatabot is them. But we don't talk about, then we come back for a place for this town. Place where we be safe for this town, we trust, both of our own and superior than me. Our parents, I told you to go for, and everybody, here, seven alcohol, I gather, all these places, 2AM, 3AM, in water, quite long before we are Bameda people. Have we not changed? And never journeyed over there, and tell them, say, profit and store, when it is waste all the opportunities, in the return, we say, the time for we will return for our diseases is now. So be tomorrow, so be one night show, now all collective business. If I'm not secure, you are not secure. I won't lose to anyone of you, we probably don't have today, they will talk for me again. And I pray you, when they talk to you, you will get something, for take a home, you go tell your brother, your sister, and your family. They see where it divide me, and just want me, but the two where they unite me, it is bigger than three ways to fight me. Jealousy is leading to anger, jealousy is leading to a type of miscreants, mystery, sorrow. Bameda, we are here, time don't come, we must change the story. Now, even if we don't become the architects of our doom, we can still become the architects of the future. Because Bameda is the city of the future, Bameda is the city of the... All of us need to build, your Excellency, our desire and our wish today is that this land returns to peace. We look up to our Father in heaven, who had appointed our father, President Fongia, and you, that in whatever way you can assist, let peace be taught. I don't talk, I be a talk. Therefore, our prayer now, I say, make peace back. But we don't overpray, we don't overpray, so now we want praise God, for tell God say, you still be on the throne, and nothing nor hat for you, for do, for we to get that peace. So we lift up our peace plant, if you get your peace plant, then you lift them up. And when we will lift up this peace plant, we go sing, so one big song of praise to our God. And thereafter, God of Jehovah's Prayer, when the people are to be praising, fight their battles. We will praise you for two minutes, and you will fight our battles, I will give you peace.
We gotta give God the highest praise, hallelujah, hallelujah. We gotta give God the highest praise. We gotta give God the highest, hallelujah. We gotta give God the highest praise, hallelujah, hallelujah.
City of Bameda, long live the Northwest Region, long live Camorou, and I lost my son. The head of state, President of the Republic, His Excellency Fongia. God bless Camorou.